Alright folks, so we're headed down to Florida and it's just become one of our, um, let's say a prerequisite that we always stop in Alabama and work some dogs. We met this guy-
Not the kissing cousin Alabama, the real Alabama.
We in Birmingham.
Yeah.
What, we met you about what, two, three, oh, two years ago, two years ago so?
It was actually three years ago, in Kansas. Yeah, then the next year behind that, y'all actually came through and stopped by. Then November y'all came by and stopped by, that's when his eye got busted. And now we back again finna get it on.
What, the first time you, you thought your dog was gonna listen to me, you said, "Ah?" He said, he said, "Heeey!" She took off, "Ah!", and he standing there watching like she was finna stop. Uh, did you go out and say, "Whoop"?
Yes, oh, so basically somebody has almost gotten physically injured-
Yes.
Received some type of bodily harm-
Mm-hmm.
Every time you come to see me.
This is true.
But yet you still come.
I mean, it, it happens. Working dogs, it's, it's a full contact sport. So y'all know, y'all know the number one rule, right? Keep that camera rolling. Man, one of our viral videos, they stopped it when I got bit on the foot. The people on the sidelines are screaming and everybody's thinking it's me screaming. And I'm laying on the ground and Jose has the camera and I'm like, "Ay, did you get that?" "No, I stopped it after you got bit."
Oh god! Ay, number one rule right here, keep that camera rolling, we'll get you to the hospital later.
Man, y'all stay sharp.
Now you know what we doing, that ain't not a bone. Watch!
Come on my man, come on my man!
Yes, my man is, yes, my man is! Yes, I'm always, yes, I'm always.
Yeah, we started him on, he's a legger.
He's a legger. Yeah, I'm always. Yes, my man is, yes, my man is! You know who I can, who I can watch everybody? Yes, I, come on boo. Come on. Biggie, biggie.
Come on! Get away from him!
Oh!
What up son? We don't know where you at.
That's a bet. Hey man, we out here today, we bout to have us some fun, hopefully nobody head get busted today.
Ay, that wall hopped out, he tried to jump me last time.
Who, who that was?
That wall.
Oh yeah, 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 he did.
He snuffed me.
We gonna be out here, we gonna have some fun today, and we gonna work some dogs, man, keep everybody safe, man.
Who all you got today?
I just got, uh-
Yeah, this puppy?
Yeah, one year old puppy, yeah, yeah.
Heard good things, heard good things.
Yeah, yeah, we finna put him on some new people today. Um, just expose him to some new decoys and stuff like that, see where he at, see where we can put him at.
And what are you doing with him?
Uh, we probably gonna do PSA, APPTA, uh, gonna have some fun with him, gonna have some fun.
That's a bet.
He gonna be better than his dad too.
So what are you doing here sir, why are you letting this dog hold this in her mouth?
I'm doing, I'm building what we call position.
That's, that's it?
That we been, uh, doing in our videos, it's like, once you give her that bite, fight with her for about two, three seconds, let her have it, and just go from there.
How old's this dog?
Uh, you're- They're all in the, they're little makes.
The siblings, okay.
She was just sat on for you, I just got a bad- The other one, the blue one, and my dog. She want too much comfort for it. Good, good girl, back, 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 good, 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 good. Good girl. Girl. Watch. Good girl.
Did she bark?
No, she didn't. She was walking. Watch, shoot that one. Girl. Good, good. Watch. Good girl. Good girl! Girl. Good, good, good girl, yeah mom, good girl, good girl! Watch. It's a choice, it's a choice. Oh, he did, oh, he did. Oh, he did, oh! Yeah, mommy, yeah mommy. Take it twice, take it twice. Whoa, eat, 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 good eat, 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 eat. Good, yeah. He need o. Good. Yes, baby. Good. Work, 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 eat. Eat it out, work no more baby, work no more baby. Come on, eat. Oh! Baby! Yep, 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 come on, oh. Oh! Come on. Eat it though. Oh, yes! Good, yes! Come on, come on, come in, oh man! Go work, go work, go work, go work. Oh, I love it, I love it. Come on out! Biggie, 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 yo, come on, eat, 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 yeah! Still your set, come on, come on, still your set. Oh! Oh, yes baby. Good job, baby, that's all you go. Oh, out. Say that motherfucker worked me. Okay. Out. Out. Watch your legs, you wanna be dirty, watch. Girl. Oh, yeah! Eat, 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 come on, let's go, come on, stay in the fight, oh! Come on. Come on. Get up, get up, get up. Grab! Let it do. Okay, um, yeah, you put him on, I put him on. Eat, eat, eat. Come on, eat. Man. Good job. Come on, come on, come on, I know you don't like this shit, there you go. That's how you get out of it though. Come on, work, work, ah, mama! It's okay, hey. It's me. Cause tomorrow it's free. Got it, it's me. Feet down, don't put them on me. I know, oh, it's for either, isn't it? Good, there we go. Good, I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna care them feet. As a handler, you wanna make sure you're reassuring your dog that, hey, they're doing the right thing, good job! It's a work in progress every time you're working with your dog, people, step by step, brick by brick. You just wanna get better at each training session. And that's why we make a point to stop through here. Alright, so, she have a problem with legs? And as you can see, I'm not trying to hurt the dog, I'm just letting her know, and showing her how to win when somebody grab your leg. Alright, you still can win.
And what do you mean by win?
Right, beat me.
And once, if she bites harder, that's a win, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Because if they getting at their suit on and she biting in harder and harder- It turns into taco meat.
Oh, you see? Now I can touch her feet, no problem. Because I showed her how to win. Alright. This is all we gonna work on, since that's her biggest problem. Boots.
And then you would wanna put the dog up when they do what you want, because if you always trying to get that one more, that dog's gonna be like, nah! And then you gotta go back and train over.
I'm ready, I'm ready. Slip more, no? Yeah, I'll just tell her, oh, out. Hey! Out! Damn! That's a value.
I guess we gonna have to have two black dogs doing Jamil.
Good, eat, eat, eat. Eat, eat, eat. There we go.
My daddy told me, "With your dog, get to him!"
Yes ma'am, yes maams.
And it's important you work with decoys and trainers that know what they're doing, that wanna build your dog up, man.
There we go. It! Good job, mama! Yes baby, yes baby. Oh shit, that shit hurts.
Alright! Girl, oh.
Hurt.
So her second bite's better than her first one?
Yeah.
She got a little bit more confidence, ain't she? See, that's one thing I wish about her.
She's biting now strictly on my monster, that shit hurts.
I wish she just went out every time as hard as she could, but she was reserved at the very beginning.
Like, like that when I touch them feet. Alright, she good.
Slip the suit up.
That boy, he just come by, that motherfucker. Good, stupid ass group. Good girl, let go. Ah, she grabbed my whole goddamn foot, that shit hurt. Good! Uh, American pet. Oh, good. Good. I don't know what he is. Bite real good too. And then it's a person. Yes, it's a person, that's why, no person now? She's 50% person, he's 75% uh, American pet, terrier, 15% English mastiff, and 10% theo. Untangled. What did you do, just? Is it good?
Is it good?
Tell him, good boy. Let him slide somebody, let him slide somebody, you know, right there. Stop it! Good boy! Put him in, pat him up, put him in, pat him up, pat that motherfucker up. He, I, I give him, that motherfucker, man, he's in. So what you do is, turn him on and start backing back. When your ass touch the fence, let him ride, stand, be with that rank, and let him smack you. Get in that sack, get in that- Come in some more. There you go. Oh, let him re-grip. Good! Good! Nice and quiet there. Good! What was that? Man, I'm so sick of these guys, man! Turn him on. Come on, put your suit on.
Suit about to go down.
Suit real fast, yeah. What we doing right now here? The courage states pushing for PDC.
That means you should talk louder, we got dogs barking in the background.
Right now we bout to do the- See, I don't even need to be on camera.
Can't talk with you on camera?
Yeah.
Alright, let's see, can, do you know what we're doing?
Ay, so right now we doing, uh, courage states for the PDC, and we gonna see what this dog got, we gonna try to see and look for, you know, things a dog need to work on, we gonna try to fix them today, today. Cause we ain't got no more time, but today. That trap, that shit gonna dare. Damn! Damn! Down! Take off! Yeah, put it on, yeah, there we go. Don't let go of me. Go crazy. Go crazy. Tell him, take her.
Talk to him, good boy.
Take off! Take off! Take off! Take off! And they bit me all in my hand.
He got you?
Yeah, yeah. Good, out. Out, heel! How bad is it, on one or ten?
Let me see.
Alright, so, um, it's been everybody but me now.
Nah, Jamil. Yeah, I ain't get it.
He ain't got bit yet. Jamil don't get bit, Jamil's the safest motherfucker we got. That's for sure, for sure. And I realize this bitch no socks on, man, I feel crunchy in the motherfucker. They slice your throat too, man. Nah. What you want, Ruth? Yeah. He's had back in the game, baby. Fuck, biting, cuss. Is that the third time I got bit? Yeah, they good. So with this next dog I'm finna bring out- You go ahead and get that crazy, keep the fuck out of there. Cool, any of? Yeah. She may still gonna bite me. I ain't gonna die, I'm gonna put the collar on you, so you gotta worry. Good. I know I play too much. Fruits. Please, just don't look at me. Fruits. Fruits. Good. Lots. Fruits! You ain't gonna get there like 10 o'clock, because we do go to these streets every time. Watch! Yes, watch! Good girl, watch! Good! Good! Yeah, watch. She's not getting there every single day, but I knew it would hurt you. Ha! Good! Ha! Good! Good, girl! Good, girl! Ha! Good! Good! Ha! Yes! Good! Oh, it frees up. Eat your food! Fruits! Good! Fruits! Fruits! Yes! Oh, yes! Good girl! Good girl! Trying to shake that water, it's still late. Here. Up! Lots! So you stand. Hurry bitch. Yes, you guys. Watch, good girl! Watch! Oh, watch him off. Ah! Watch! Good girl! At it, good! Good! Pack him up. Good, pack him, yes! Yes! Good! Good! Good, yes! Good! Good, packing, yeah! Good! Good! Good, packing! Good! Good, laying back, frees up. Couple of bits. Eat your blocks! Good! Good, but she ain't seen a bite back there in so many goddamn years, boy, she needed that. Good! Good! Good, you can crash back there too, girl! Good! Good, come on here, I wanna have another win for once, see? Pack, good, freeze up right there. Eat your blocks! Good. Come straight down the driveway, stick it up, presentation out. Blocks! 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 Good! Good girl! Good, ha! Good, ha! Good. Good. Good girl! Freeze up right there, damn. Eat out, here! Good! Good girl! Good. Yes, I'm mama. Yes, I'm mama. Good. Good. Yes, pack again. Good, mama. Good. Good. Center back in. Good. Bring it right there. Eat out, foods! 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 Watch. Crash perfect.
I knew it.
She a dirty bitch. She a dirty bitch.
I been waiting long though.
Listen, one miss, that bitch gotta stop. She don't care what it, she have to stop. That's real, that's a real kill. Push meat on her foot on. Watch. Come on in. Good. 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 Pack, good, pack, good. Good. Good, she a joy fucker, I guess. Good. Okay, I give more, I give. Good, packing. I give more. Good, packing. Get your dog! Good, packing. Foods! Blocks! Blocks. And that bitch got locked in, I had forty to go to the thud, I would hit him if he sent T's. Watch him. Watch him. Watch him. Good. Yep. Get him, boy! Get the head up, get the head up.
There you go.
Good. 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 Yes, there it is. Yes, my name is... Oh! That's it, they move it, yeah. That's it, they be moving. Good. Eat. Oh!
Good, big eats.
There, man. Good. Eat that boy! Yes, I'm a food! Up! Up. Watch him.
Nice, dear, yo. How old are you?
He's like, hey, boy. Watch him. Watch him. He's not even hiding his leg yet. Him's just still amazing.
I got a five-year-old that's known as a naked leg.
Ah! Ah! Oh, yeah! There, man. Good. Good.
There it is.
Oh, yeah, that's a real arm right there, he like, oh, I never had it open my mouth that wide.
There you go.
Good. Good. It's eating. Good, oh, yes! Oh, he was so good. Oh, boy! Yes, I'm a boo boo. Yes, I'm a boo boo boo! You gonna do some type of stamping, I'm fine with that right now, because I want him to eat in game. Once you get him engaged, start sticking, and then start throwing the presentation. Good. That's good. Good boy! He's super safe, you can rub him all that shit. And that'll help him grip better. Good. He coming off?
Coming off, he coming off.
Yeah, so watch him.
Goddamn face.
Yeah, you wanna stretch him, laying in just a little bit, see if he re-gripped? Good! Had him on Lillie? Good boy! Good boy! Laying in a little bit. Good boy!
Good man!
Slip that jack, then next time he punch.
Chum, chum.
Get him! Pack him, I don't know if it bite word.
I don't know if it bite word either.
Fuck him up!
Pass off.
Fuck him! It's fuck him, it's fuck him. Yeah, back on out that motherfucker, Jamil, he losing. And when he come off that bitch, put that whip on. Somebody put that whip on. There we go, there we go. Now, make sure him miss and bail out on him. Good, that's good, go ahead, come on.
Skitters.
He got out. Activate it in. This bitch bite hard! Dirty bitch.
I was about to say, you about to get your other hand, nigga.
He got scared of that camera. Soon as you ready, that camera, he came off. Oh, he ain't getting it, you out, see that?
You gotta leave him here, and then back up. There you go.
Fuck him! Good boy! Fuck him! Good boy, fuck him! Good, fuck him! Ah, good boy! That bitch bite hard! Good, fuck him!
He don't like that shoulder.
Good, fuck him! Good. I didn't know that bitch bite that hard, show him what it looked like. I was like, man, I gotta use my gun. Good, fuck.
Keep doing it. Cause he got scared of that camera.
Good, fuck him! Good, fuck him, good boy! Good boy! Fuck, boy! Fuck, good! Fuck.
Not come off.
This bitch strong with it. Hold my hand.
And, and this is what the Brotherhood of Decoys looks like.
This motherfucker's strong!
Why you get the lightest person out here to help you? He ain't got, he ain't got no weight either.
Man, it's worth staying with. Good boy!
Hey, if that was me in real life, I would've been done.
He'd've drug you back to the den, boy.
That motherfucker's so strong, boy. That dog bite hard in hell.
Fuck! Swat! Oh, fuck! Yah! There he is. You said hell fighting. Hit that dog rope and door.
Yaiata! You look like Popeye.
Smash. There we go, motherfucker! That's a good boy! Good boy! We just want some reassurance, that's all you want. That's all you want, is a little reassurance.
Is that right, momma? Is that right?
See, I wouldn't beat the fool if I wanted one, not for the fuck.
I was looking for my gun for a second, I think I tired of looking for it.
Oh! Oh! Oh, good boy! Oh! Ah! Oh, shit! He got my whole motherfucker arm in his mouth. Oh! Boy! Oh! Good boy! I'm glad the jacket's trying to stand out, because I'm not tall enough to actually work the motherfucker. Good boy! Good, yeah! Good!
Sorry, lean over, if you wanna zoom in, you can zoom in.
Okay, bud.
Those are the twins, but, but, her dad is a cheerpresser. She's ten, or eleven this week, I think. She was the one.
Out him. Out him corn.
Getting some change.
Load him up, load him up in the car. Load him up in the car. Turn him on. Just up. Uh, where y'all go down there? Catch one alone? There we go, keep making it sound worse. Good boy! Out of the corner, choke him out, choke him out down, choke him out down, that's a good block. That's a good block, man. Jamil, are you timing? How's the leg, cause it's kinda difficult to handle. Yo. Pass! Good. Good boy! Don't dance for a minute, if he get loose, whack him with that stick. There we go. There we go, beautiful, there we go. He worked, he worked, he worked. You go hit a decoy, go crazy. Dog right here. Well, I'm going well, he'll do.
Great, it must've left the dog.
And then I'm gonna walk that way, and then the decoy, I'm gonna walk that way. Heal. Good boy! Good boy!
Ah, ah, my nuts! My nuts!
You already gotta respect me, you be fine. No more damage! Go steal and make him move. Move again. Alright. No! Blocks! Move out! Down. 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 Pass! Good boy! Good. This ain't no goddamn pussy. He don't like my soul, fool. Like, he not, like, he's young. Shit! He need that though. Shit!
He need that, he need that.
The one like that, dude.
Say he want that taco meat.
Oh, boy! I don't get a chance to get this goat something, I'm gonna get him. Good! Ah, get that shit hurt, good! Get that shit hurt, boy! You can slip that motherfucker, slip that motherfucker, and then stand there. Look at me!
Look at me!
I can't. Pass off! Good boy! Stop looking at that dick. Stop looking at that dick. Pass off! Good boy! Good boy! Good boy! Oh, yeah!
Thank you, you want the collar?
Yeah, what am I gonna tell you?
She not ready to bit me in my hand.
Hey, put that motherfucker on the label of that bitch, right, right on the side of that label.
Yeah, you want.
Right on the side of that fucking label. Pass off! No, I can live that, I can live that.
Damn, you ain't gonna know what a good bite right there.
Oh, yeah, boy!
That's a good bite right there.
That's a good bite right there. Oh, boy! Oh! That bitch got my whole muscle, boy, that shit hurt quick. Good boy! Packing! Packing, good! Packing, good! Packing! Good boy! Good boy! Good boy! Good.
That bitch gonna be a nice fucking dog, boy.
Good boy, yeah.
He gonna be a nice dog.
Good boy, pack, mm! Bite like this? And how? Hey, what? He won't finish it. Motherfucking motherfucker's ass. Good boy! Good boy! Try and mob this motherfucker?
Hurry up, boy, that shit hurt. I can't even feel my own, no more.
Pass off! Good boy! Pass off! Good boy! Good boy, pass off! Good boy! Good boy! Good boy! He might come out hardin'. Good boy! I wish you had something you could put in front of you, safe. I'm finna try! Fucking. Let his ass go! Pack him, ah! Let his ass go! Come on, missin' there, back out! Good boy! Let it go. Pack him! Good! And you gotta stay right there. Ooh! Good boy! Oof! Good boy! Good! Good boy! Oh, yeah. What is that? Careful, like. Good boy! His big grip ain't changed. Good boy! And I literally have no videos of this dog. It'd be great if I had some to fucking post of this motherfucker.
You should've told us the video on the phone.
Okay, say, lady, we can redo this one more time? You got to do one of y'all phone, y'all got that aircraft, cause my phone's camera, so. Slip it, what's the next? Hey, they call me K9 Genie for a reason, man. I don't get bit.
Wait, wait, wait.
I already got bit.
I said, get this, could it?
Danger! Good boy! Shoo! Ah! Hey! Run too tight, and he said, no! He is coming for a leg.
I think if he had to stumble with it.
Yeah, yeah, that would, oh, that, I said, aw, man.
He was so mad!
He definitely get what he can get.
And it's mine!
You pushed him in the ground. I tell you.
He get you?
Yeah, he nailed me a little bit, right?
That kid miss is priceless. Like, we all see that shit, but my dog is blowing in the air, boy, that shit, they're priceless.
Let's try it again. This is the part you come to get. Hey, motherfucker! Man, that's on my leg, man! Hey, he don't care what he bite, bro.
He bite you.
He don't care what he bite.
Hey, dude, he care about legs, he's very clear when he comes.
Like, he, he just don't care, he don't care which.
Hey, do, do it again! Do it again!
That's it.
Third, third time's the charm.
Dude!
Dangerous, man! The fuck you roll my old damn dog?
I'm looking at it in the eye. Oh, you, you gave it to the right person, that camera woman right there.
Oh, yeah, she called with that camera shit. Aw, you saw us fooling around, acting like, she like, whoa, just gonna sit back.
Alright, you on?
Yeah.
Alright, guys, so I appreciate y'all allowing us to stop by and work our dogs, and have some fun, and there's always an eventful experience when we come out here.
Eventful or delightful?
I, yeah, there's blood, every time.
Every time.
My mama said, are you going to Alabama to get a shit? She said, yeah, she said, no blood this time, I said, not from me.
He ain't lying, 'cause I got the blood this time.
Hey, well, last night your dog made me bleed, this time.
But how long?
Jamil's dog.
I know. If it would've been your dog, it would've made sense.
It would've made sense.
Well, we know who didn't get bit.
Ain't got long. Better knock a wood, boy, and it ever win. So, as y'all see, man, this dog training shit, this bite work, is fun, but it's also dangerous. You can get hurt, you can get bit, the dogs can get hurt, but as long as you're trying to be safe, and you're working with people that are looking out for your safety, y'all can see Jensen on that video laughing, boy, when you see yourself running, you's like, I was trying to grab that little dog.
Cause then, I, I caught him the first time, and the second time, he was like, nope.
He said, weep, weep.
But, yeah, this is just the occupation that has it, or what we do, like.
Yup, you just, you try not to catch a clean bite.
Well, you know, this would make, make us, you know, decoys, and if y'all really wanna do this, it'll be fun to y'all, like it is about us, like, we don't take this serious. You know, we don't, we don't, this is just, it's no different than playing basketball, you know, like.
A foul is a foul.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, you know, 'cause we really love what we do, and we really love, you know what I'm saying?
Appreciate y'all stopping by every time, but we really do get it.
Yeah, most definitely, man.
Alright, you know, man, every time, man, we gotta come to Texas.
Hey, we cutting, we on the way.
Alright, y'all, man, share, like, subscribe, all that shit, stay sharp.
Hold on, wait, don't cut it off here, we got a seminar, June twenty-ninth, June thirtieth, and July the first, next year, we here.
Be there, it's in Alabama.
DM me for more information, Dogman Jan, Jansen Graham, all in one.
Instagram, Touch of Dominance, uh, TikTok, K9 Genie, uh, Contay Me also.